Good evening and welcome to the July fourteenth regular meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes Planning Commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city attorney's office and the city's planning -- actually, we don't have planning --
Not tonight.
If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward, we'll recognize and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission and not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerrys, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting, please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. Mrs. Arndt, the roll call, please.
Mr. Apahidian?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krent?
Here.
Ms. Koopa?
Here.
Mr. Zanzika?
Mr. Stratt?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
We did get a -- I got an email, I think you were copying, but Zanzika's at a drain commissioner's conference up at Mackinac. Not able to be here. Okay, next one is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve or amend the agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve then.
Thank you, Mr. Krent. And second, by Mr. Stratt.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Ms. Koopa?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apahidian?
Yes.
The agenda item number three is the minutes of the June twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen Planning Commission meeting. Is there a motion to approve or amend? Mr. Tagle? And second, by Ms. Koopa?
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Ms. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apahidian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
The agenda item number four is public comment. This is reserved for items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? Saying no one, we'll move on to item number five. A preliminary site plan review, file number SP-1007, proposed Evangel Baptist Church of Troy auditorium, south of Maple, west of Dequender, at twenty-nine hundred Lovington, section thirty-six, currently zoned RT, one-family attached residential, and IB, integrated industrial and business districts. Who's going to start that off?
I'll start that off and finish it.
Okay.
So as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, this is an existing church located at twenty-nine hundred Lovington. Lovington is located west of Dequender, north of Fourteen Mile, in section thirty-six in Troy. The church is proposing an addition, a fifty-three-hundred-and-sixty square foot addition, which is primarily comprised of sanctuary and assembly space. It's going to be located on this side, on the south side of the building, which also happens to be zoned integrated industrial and business. The northern portion is RT, two-family residential, but the south portion is IB, and it's surrounded on three sides by IB, which stands for integrated industrial and business district. The other improvements include reconfiguring and increase in the parking lot, adding new landscaping, and providing stormwater management. The applicant was before Planning Commission on June ninth of this year, and the application was postponed to provide the applicant with opportunity to address some of the shortcomings that were identified in the report and by the Planning Commission at the meeting. So they're back before us this evening. I'm not going to go through the entire report. I'm just going to really hit on the shortcomings, and they've addressed all of them with some One of the requirements for -- one of the requirements the Planning Commission had was to work with the engineering department regarding stormwater and incorporate best management practices. They did revise the stormwater detention here in this corner of the site. It's more visually appealing, but it does not appear to incorporate any best management practices. And they also did not provide stormwater calculations to determine if the pond is sized accordingly, and this is an issue that we could certainly work with them during final to incorporate more best management practices and verify that there's enough capacity in there to handle the storm, the additional impervious surface on the site. The applicant was asked to provide a five-foot wide sidewalk along Lovington or seek a sidewalk waiver. The site plan does not show that five-foot wide sidewalk. Unless they get a waiver, it's actually required. So we recommend that they actually provide the sidewalk unless they get a waiver. The applicant did provide a revised landscape plan, but it's not sealed. So we would require that prior to final, that the landscape plan that they submit be sealed. So to summarize, we recommend preliminary site plan approval for the addition and the other improvements to the site with some conditions, and those are: one, submit required stormwater calcs and incorporate stormwater best management practices where possible; two, incorporate alternative vegetation in the detention pond; three, add a five-foot wide sidewalk along Lovington or seek a sidewalk waiver; and fourth and finally, submit a landscape plan sealed by a landscape, licensed landscape architect. I'd like to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Planning Director?
What is the best practices for that? In summary, I mean, I don't have to go into a lot of detail, but what are best practices? What does that entail, one of the terms used to apply to that situation with the --
There's really a lot of potential, different options available to them. If you look at the note there, they're proposing that, they're proposing some plant species -- actually, I'll show you the landscape plan. They're proposing some plant species here. But you notice this, these dots represents turf grass?
Oh, I see. Now I see.
That's a simple one, is instead of turf grass, you could do some more creative things with plant material, and they help to cleanse the water, and that's just one. You can reduce piping by sheet flowing, and you can use, you know, you can use bio-squails and rain gardens. There's all kinds of different -- I wouldn't want to limit the applicant by making suggestions, but there are options available to them to be more creative in how they apply to the stormwater retention.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Mr. Tagle.
What would happen if you found out that retention, that area that's identified for retention is too small, and it would start to change the configuration, parking would have to, more parking would have to be added down along the south property line? I mean, you only have one additional car over what's required. Is that something that administratively would be acceptable approval, or would it have to come back in front of us?
We would, if, our assumption is until, our assumption is, that's why we kind of recommend approval, is that it's going to be appropriately sized. But to your point, if it was, if it needed to be expanded, and we did have to add to the salt, we'd come back because we consider that to be more impervious surface, and it would be an expansion of the footprint of the imperviousness. Unless the Planning Commission stipulated in the condition that, you know, you let them, you know, up to so many spaces do that administratively, you know, whatever you came up with. But generally speaking, if we would consider an expansion that wasn't otherwise considered this evening to be significant, we'd come back.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? That's right at the entrance to their property, too.
It is.
And it's probably adequately sized because it's always been there, right? Has it always been there, or has it been moved?
Um, I don't know if it's, I've been there a couple times, I don't recall noticing if it's, what the function is.
Well, you could ask the applicant.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there no other question from the Planning Commission, or is the applicant? Please come forward, and you have to, do have to speak in that microphone back there.
Hi, my name is Sabir Kassab. I'm a member of Evangel Baptist Church of Troy, and you were mentioning, has it been existing? Is that existing in, as a --
Yes.
No, it hasn't. It's been grass, grass all along, and we were mentioning, actually, Brent was mentioning, or one of you was mentioning if it's big enough, and we don't have any problem. I have our engineer directly communicate with your engineer here to see what we can do to fix problems like that. And as far as adding, that's all, you know, it's grassy now, and it's going to be greasy later, and adding a little bit shrubs here and there is not, I don't think is much of a big deal there. And as far as sidewalk, actually, there is no sidewalk anywhere on the street, the whole street, so you don't have a beginning or the end. It's going to take you nowhere, actually, on the sidewalk. In order to go a sidewalk, you got to walk through the grass, get on the sidewalk, go about maybe a hundred feet, and come on, on the grass again, go on the street. So it really doesn't make, it doesn't serve any purpose at all.
Notice, if I could just back your point up.
Sure.
So what he's saying is, there's no sidewalk here, there's no sidewalk here, so it's --
It is a neighborhood node.
Well, it's not zone neighborhood node. I'm just, I'm just basically backing you up that --
Right.
Helping you illustrate your point.
Yep, yep.
So did it a waiver, they have to go to the ZBA then?
Traffic Committee.
Traffic Committee, okay.
Actually, I called the traffic committee, they say, you know, to get to their meeting here and see what they say, and then come back to us, so.
Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr. Tagle. For Mr. Savina, was this property developed before the stormwater management requirements as far as retention?
Oh, boy, this has been here a long time.
Because I'm just wondering, where is the stormwater going now?
There's a --
Is it just raining, you know, sheet flowing into the grassy areas?
Um, I don't know, I can tell you that there's floodplain here, and that may be the case. This church, do you know when the church was constructed?
Oh, gosh, it's been --
Been a long time.
Lot, at least in the fifties, maybe, four east fifties, and it never had --
You're probably correct.
Yeah.
It was long before.
And it never had drains in the parking lot or anywhere, actually, yeah. For some reason or another, the water were disappearing, so. Until the city actually put the new storm drains, and that helped a lot, actually, yeah.
There could be a lot of questions about that stormwater, like where is the water going now? And if they retain it, how do they get it to the detention pond, which is up in the corner of the property, if the site or if the impervious area is flowing in different directions?
You mind if I answer that, Brent? Okay. Actually, okay, the engineer actually is working on that, so we want to make sure everything flows down, okay? Plus, we have storm drains now, a lot of storm drains where he's, with a topo survey type of thing, he's kind of sloping everything down, make sure that no water stays anywhere.
Okay, so are you, I'm sorry, are you adding storm drainage?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Are you adding catch basins?
Yes.
Yep, I see them.
Yep.
Thank you.
So actually, the storage is just for extra, maybe, extra rain, extra stuff, and, yeah. You see those dots, right? Those are the storm drains, right there.
Okay, is there any other questions from the commission, from the applicant? This is not a public hearing, however. The Planning Commission typically does take comments. Is there anyone else in the audience who wants to comment on this application? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the table, the Planning Commission, for either a resolution Mr. Hudson.
Let me offer a resolution. Be resolved that the preliminary site plan approval pursuant to Article Eight of the zoning ordinance has requested for the proposed Evangel Baptist Church of Troy auditorium, located south of Maple, west of Dequender, twenty-nine hundred Lovington, section thirty-six within the RT, which is a one-family attached residential, and the IB, integrated industrial and business districts, be granted, subject to the applicant addressing the following items at final site plan review. One, submit required stormwater calculations and incorporate stormwater best management practices where possible. Two, incorporate alternative vegetation in the detention pond. Three, add a five-foot sidewalk along Lovington or seek a sidewalk waiver. Four, submit a landscape plan sealed by a licensed landscape architect.
Is there a second to the motion? Mr. Apahidian? Any further discussion on the motion? If not, the roll call, please.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Ms. Koopa?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apahidian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Thanks.
Next agenda is number six, which is a special use request and preliminary site plan review. This is a public hearing, special use, file number SU-414, proposed Speedway service station, southeast corner of Big Beaver and John R. at twenty-nine eighty John R. Section twenty-five, currently zoned GB, general business district, controlled by consent judgment. Mr. Savina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an existing aerial, showing what's that, twenty-nine eighty John R. now? This is existing Speedway station, as you indicated, and the applicant's proposing to make a number of changes to the Speedway station. They include relocation of the fuel pumps and canopy, relocation of the dumpster, and rescreening of the trash enclosure, a new recycle storage building adjacent to the new trash enclosure screening, and reconfiguring parking and adding two on-site parking spaces. The site is one-point-one acres in area. This existing fuel station is twenty-three hundred square feet in size. I would note that site access, which is one curb cut on Big Beaver and one curb cut on John R., is going to remain the same, so. As you indicated, Mr. Chairman, the site is controlled by consent judgment. Is there anybody who doesn't know what a consent judgment is?
Maybe for the audience, you can go ahead and explain.
I can explain it in lamest terms, or Mr. Massey can explain it more technically.
That's even better.
How about I defer to Mr. Massey, he can explain it.
Well, consent judgment is a court order that authorizes deviations from the zoning ordinance. State zoning enabling act does allow court orders to be used by city councils and township boards sometimes to allow something that would not otherwise be allowed by the zoning ordinance itself.
And is it fair to say that in most cases, it's because, it's a result of litigation?
Yes, it's usually the result of litigation, although sometimes there's what's known as a friendly lawsuit, where they kind of agree to have a lawsuit just to do a consent judgment.
That would never happen here, never here. So what the consent judgment was entered into in nineteen eighty-eight, and it does require that the site be developed in accordance with the Highway Service District zoning regulations, which no longer, de-recked, no longer exists, but because they're attached to part of the consent judgment, we have to adhere to them as per the consent judgment. So it does require that they seek special use approval for anything that's done in the HS district, and this site never received special use approval at any time. So that's why they're before us. Even though it's an existing station, they're making revisions, and it's still going to be a station, they're required by consent judgment to go through special use approval. So it was a long-winded explanation of why we're here this evening with the special use for existing station. So the standards, setback standards for canopies and pump islands and canopy edges in the HS district, we're all met with this revised layout. Hearing the site plan, there's the, I put the copy of the consent judgment in here so you could, in case anyone had insomnia at any time last, over the weekend, you could pull that out, and you'd have no problems falling asleep. So, okay, there we go. So the applicant is, here's the proposed building here, and this is the canopy. They're proposing, the report says seven spaces in front of the building, they're actually proposing eight spaces here in front of the building, and they're also adding ten spaces along Big Beaver, and a number of spaces scattered over here and over here. So there's a, these ten spaces, though, if you look at how this is going to work, if someone, most people that are going to, with some exceptions, a lot of people that shop in the convenience store are going to be getting gas, and then walking to the convenience store. There will be some people who are there to buy milk or cigarettes or whatever that park here and walk in. There's, these ten spaces over here, we believe are kind of in no man's land, because the person's going to have to, going to come in and, who does choose to park here, going to park here, and they're going to have to walk, compete, and be very cognizant of turning movements here, especially people coming off Big Beaver, then walk under the canopy, between cars, and then have to compete with cars here, and then cars backing up, and it's a kind of somewhat tenuous journey through the parking lot, for spaces that we don't believe are ever going to be used. Thirty spaces for a gas station, I think, is a lot of spaces, so what we recommend is that these spaces go away and become landscape open space, and reduce imperviousness on the site, and make the site, these are just needless, we believe. They will still have twenty parking spaces in addition to the spaces at the pump, at the pump, so that's one of our recommendations. The, for elevations, they did not submit elevations for the canopy, and in section six-twenty-eight B of the ordinance, the old ordinance, the, it requires that the canopy structure shall be designed and constructed to be architecturally compatible to the principal building. They're also proposing a new recycle storage building adjacent to the existing building, and it's, the building is proposed to be masonry. It's difficult to tell from the revised elevation, the submitted elevations, if they're going to be consistent with the building, and we'd like to verify that administratively prior to during final site plan review. Given the fact that it's an existing gas station today, given its location in a busy intersection of two major mileroads, and there's going to be really no change in impact, we believe that this item should not necessarily have to go back to Planning Commission to verify those two items. So that's going to be one of our recommendations.
Can you point out the recycle storage, the digital recycle storage building, is that to the left of the?
Here.
Yeah, okay.
The, in terms of lighting, the site lighting includes twenty-four under canopy lights and five pole-mounted lights, and lighting levels are exceeded as per, related to our photometric requirements. They exceed the maximum of one candle, one-foot candle, that's exceeded along the east property line. The maximum twenty-foot candles requirement has exceeded in a number of places, and the pole height was not indicated on the site plan. The fixtures are compliant, but what we'd like to do is have them resubmit the lighting and the photometric plan that's compliant prior to final site plan approval. It's just a matter of kind of tweaking the numbers and making some modifications to the site plan. That's, that can be done relatively, relatively easily. We do find that the site plan, other than, other than the site issues I mentioned, the application does meet all the special use standards in the ordinance. So to summarize, we find that the application meets all required special use standards. We recommend that the Planning Commission grant special use approval and preliminary site plan approval, provided that the applicant resubmit the following items during final site plan approval, and there are four. One is remove the ten spaces adjacent to Big Beaver Road, just to clarify, it's these ten spaces here. Two, submit canopy elevations that are architecturally compatible to the principal building. Three, confirm that the masonry of the new building matches existing masonry of the result, of the main building. And four, resubmit lighting and photometric plan that's compliant with section thirteen oh five of the zoning ordinance. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Planning Director? I just had one question. Is, where is the dumpster now again? Has it been, is it shown on the plan there? Sure is, you can see it.
It's, it's here.
Oh, it's part of, oh.
Yeah.
Part of that storage building?
Yes.
Okay, okay, perfect. Okay, then I'm okay. Is the applicant here, please? Would you please go to the microphone and state your name?
I'm Mike Engman, I'm Speedway representative. As far as the, the conditions that were outlined here by Mr. Savina, removing the ten spaces along Big Beaver Road would not be a problem. The only thing I would ask, the curb line and everything there is existing, and I thought I heard you mention something about kind of rerouting the curb and making the, that paved area that's there existing now part of the yard or greenbelt area, and would just request that if we were to just leave the existing curb as it is, but not stripe those, those ten parking spots?
That's the objective, I don't think, but go ahead, but I'm sorry.
Okay. And then the canopy elevations, we can submit canopy elevations with, with the final site plan. The masonry, construction of the trash enclosure and recycle building, I think the note on the plans actually calls for a split face block, but it would be no problem to match the, the existing facade of the building. And then as far as the lighting and photometric plan, you know, we can work with our vendor to resubmit a revised plan. And I tried to get a copy of the ordinance off the website earlier today to review, but for whatever reason, the link didn't work, so I wasn't able to review what the lighting output requirements were. But it sounds like, just to kind of clarify, twenty-foot candles at any one spot is the maximum, so like under the canopy?
Lower it down.
Okay. I know Speedway's preference is to maintain under the canopy at least between twenty-five and thirty-foot candles, just for safety purposes. The requirement as far as the light leaving the site should be no problem to comply with that, but that would be my only comment on the lighting under the canopy. Is that for?
What I can do then, if you have any problems with their link, is I can, I can scan that language and just email it to you.
Okay.
We can dialogue and make sure that, because I don't have, I don't have the provisions memorized.
Okay.
We can talk and help you get to the compliance.
Other than that, I think that's.
Okay. Questions for the applicant, Mr. Krent?
Yeah, you say you didn't want to add any green space, in other words, just leave it as what we see now on this, on this overhead. What is the reason? What is the reason, is there a traffic reason for that or what's the logic?
Well, as far as the, it's all existing pavement now, and it would provide a little bit more space for traffic to circulate, you know, in and around the canopy. That would really be the, the only reason to leave it paved as it is now.
If you were going to have those parking spots there, maneuverability would be greatly reduced from those 19-foot depths anyway. I would, you know, I'm not saying utilize that whole 19-foot that would have been parking, but I would think it would be smart to have a little more green space, only because even on the, it's not on the slide, but if you can go to the overhead photo of the... That's it, okay. You see how the, on the upper right, you see how the grass comes in that far in? It would be, it would be nice to have something, not necessarily all the way into that, but something, maybe half of that, you know, just to add more green space. And likewise, along John R., it looks pretty ratty right now, but if that was enhanced somehow, again, what we're trying to achieve here is good visual curb appeal, you know, to make the place look really great. And I think adding, adding additional green elements would help, especially a gas station. I mean, a gas station is, is pretty industrial in itself, you know, you've got fumes, you've got trucks moving in and out to fill up your big tanks and it's kind of heavy. If we could soften that more so, it'll lead to a better appeal to people driving by. I would consider that, I would put that in our resolution.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Now, when you, when you say along John R., adding green space as well, I don't think it'd probably be a problem to add the green space along, you know, where the parking spaces are there. I'm not sure, I'd have to check the spacing as far as between, you know, where the canopy ends and how much space is there between that existing curb line now, just to make sure that.
Yeah, I, again, I, what you have there is probably sufficient for space. It just looks pretty brown. I actually didn't visit the site recently, so I can't really say what it looks like today, but it should be enhanced again. As opposed to, no need to make it wider.
Oh, okay.
Just enhance the appearance of it.
Well, I'm not really in favor of just eliminating the striping for the parking and then just leaving the blacktop and the existing curb there. That's, that's really not enhancing the.
I'm talking about John R.
Just talking, yeah, just so we're on the same page, I think what Mr. Grant was indicating is this, this can remain this depth but be enhanced. And this, this could, this green area can.
Increase in depth.
Increase in depth and be enhanced higher.
And where are the 10 spaces that they're going to take out?
Yeah, those, the 10 spaces would be along Big Beaver. So, you've got, you've got maneuverability there to do it. That's what I'm suggesting. And I'm not going to give a dimension, I'm going to leave it up to staff to work out something that's sensible for the situation, but I would like to see a wider green belt to mirror the other side, the east part, but not, not as fully, because that's a, you see, it cuts on an angle there, and I can understand why, because you've got the, it's like that's where they fill the tanks, on that upper right-hand corner where the yellow striping is.
Correct, yep. And the, the tanks would be replaced as part of the project, so the tanks would actually slide to the, I'm trying to think directionally.
I know, it's upside down backwards.
Yeah, it would be to the south, I think, right?
Okay.
So, the tanks would actually be towards the building, I guess, to put it more simply. We'll be putting new underground storage tanks in, so just, yeah.
Any other concerns or comments from the planning commission? This is not a public hearing, but if there are any members of the audience who want to comment on this, just.
It actually is a public hearing.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry. So, we'll open the public hearing, if anyone wants to speak on that. If not, we'll bring it back to the cause of public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
I just wanted to look at my printed plans, because sometimes it's harder to read on the screen. But they do propose to, so right now, there are four trees here that they're proposing that remain there. So, any enhancement, any landscaping enhancements in addition to those trees would have to be designed to complement those trees.
I think we are adding a total of seven trees. I think most of them are along Big Beaver Road. I think six, and then there's a seventh one, I believe, in the, what would be the southwest corner of the site, I think, that we're adding.
There's actually four proposed new trees along Big Beaver and three new ones along John R.
Okay, Mr. Stratt?
You know, actually, what you're doing is you're adding more pumps, aren't you?
I'd be the same amount of pumps.
So, therefore, you can't do anything on a John R. because you're limited as far as the access on John R. It bypasses on John R., so you really can't do much as far as increasing that anyway. Is that correct?
Increasing the greenbelt area.
The greenbelt area, right.
Yeah, because the, the new canopy that we'd be putting up is wider, but the depth of it, it's not.
Closer to John R., it's like.
Correct, yeah.
I'm looking at your plan here, and I can see where you're talking about. You actually have six pumps, as I see that right now, that you've added, or not added, but that's how many you're ending up with.
It'd be six that we end up with, and there's six currently at the site, too.
Oh, is that right? You're not adding anymore?
Not, not adding anymore, just kind of reconfiguring the layout. The way it's laid out now, there's two rows of three dispensers.
Oh, I see, okay. Okay, so you did expand.
The, yeah, the canopy would be, yeah, wider and skinnier, I guess, for.
No problem.
And the reason we do that, it just provides better circulation for the site that, you know, with that wider, just one row of dispensers, it's a lot easier to get in and out of the dispenser spaces.
Right. But that being said, that being wider between, therefore, the space that we're talking about, the landscape, really is not that necessary that you have that much space, because you do have plenty of circulation space because of the width of the spaces between the, between the pumps. So, really what Tom was talking about, Mr. Grant talked about, I think, is legit, and I agree with him. I would almost think that we should have all of that space landscaped.
Can you just declare, which space, you're talking along John R. or that, that's what I see?
Right there. You know, granted, I'd leave the curb cut where you got it, but if I had my relatives, I'd move the curb cut over further, too. But, you know, not being excited, in other words, move it over further so that we'd have additional landscaping. But I think that's really going a little bit too far.
Is there any vehicle service work done at this station?
No, no, it's just a gas station, convenience store.
And just a reminder, the planning commission, this is a special use application, and you have the authority to condition, can make conditions related on the site plan matter.
Right, that's true. Well, I'd certainly like to see at least half of those parking spaces, you know, the depth of them be added to greenbelt.
I agree.
Well, whoever makes the, whoever makes the resolution should clarify the exact depth of this.
You don't want to be left on the hook. I don't feel like it.
Here it is.
We're the body. I understand, we're the body that makes that determination.
So, what was the length of a standard parking spot?
Usually 19 feet, isn't it?
We'll call it nine and a half foot, I'll put that in the resolution.
I would, I would, you know, it's your resolution.
Yes, I'll put in the.
Minimum.
Minimum nine and a half feet.
Why not make it 10? Do I hear 10?
It's your resolution.
Reasonable special conditions. Okay, Mr. Grant, are you ready to provide a resolution?
Yeah, just as soon as I bring up that page, I just, I'm scanning through a bunch of stuff, and I passed up the page I was.
Do I have a resolution or is?
Yeah, I got it, it's coming. One more is from my portal, I said. Okay, resolve that special use approval and preliminary site plan approval for the proposed improvements to the Speedway Service Station located at the southeast corner of Big Beaver and John R., 2980 John R. Section 25, currently zoned GB, General Business District, controlled by consent judgment, be granted subject to the, to the applicant resubmitting the following items as part of the final site plan review. Remove the 10 spaces adjacent to Big Beaver and provide an additional 10 feet of landscaping from the, the north, yeah, on the north, on the north side.
Minimal 10 feet.
Minimum 10 feet, yes. Minimum 10 feet to the existing green space along Big Beaver. Two, submit canopy elevations that are architecturally compatible with the principal building. Three, confirm that the masonry of the new building matches the existing masonry of the building. Four, resubmit lighting and photometric plan that is compliant with section 13.05.
Your support? Mr. Tagle? Further discussion of the resolution? The roll call, Mr. Savadon.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apahidian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
If you care. The next agenda item is number seven, public comment for any items that are on the current agenda. Seeing no one that wants to speak on that, we'll move on to number eight, planning commission comment. Let's begin tonight with Mr. Tagle.
Well, Mr. Stratt, since this is your last meeting with us, I want to tell you, I appreciated your input over the years. I'm a little bit upset that you're leaving me all alone on this. But I wish you a lot of luck in your new adventure. Yeah, stop in and see us sometime.
Thank you. I'll be at the next meeting.
On the other side of the table.
That's true. Mr. Grant?
You've done an incredible job, I really appreciate your expertise, because it's the kind of, you know, it's right up your alley, it's your profession, and having that professional opinion and experience and knowledge was incredibly valuable to this group, so thank you ever so much, Tom.
Thank you, appreciate the comment.
Mr. Apahidian?
It was a pleasure working with you the short few months that you've been here. It was a great experience, and I wish you luck and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Ms. Cruz?
I just want to thank Mr. Stratt for being so warm and welcoming when I was the new girl and for being supportive of my commentary and my opinions. I appreciate it, I'll be sorry to see you go. I don't know who I'm going to be able to sit next to, although I'm scared with my hands. You'll find that you miss it.
Right. I will.
But thank you.
Well, thank you. Very nice.
Let's reserve time for the end. Ms. Cooper?
Thank you very much for your service to the city, many years of service.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Mr. Hudson?
I must have spent a great adventure with you on the planning commission, and I have enjoyed your sharp comments and forgetting to turn your PDA off at every other meeting.
Well, I share your light comments, and we will definitely miss you, and I think the fact that you've served on this commission for over 13 years, at least one or two bears, I would imagine.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Few bears.
That is not insignificant, and I thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And now your turn.
My turn?
Yes, your turn.
Oh, boy.
You're still.
I should only say that it's been really a real pleasure to serve on the planning commission. I really enjoyed working with the past as well as the present administration, as well as members on the planning commission. I, I'm sure that there'll be a lot of continuation of the efforts as it relates to stormwater management that I've been trying to push a lot. But other than that, I really, I want to express, I don't know what I'm doing with my Tuesday nights, and I'm going to really miss the morning night.
The austerity program is coming, isn't it?
Right, making $2 an hour. No, I really thank you very much, I appreciate all the comments you've made, and hopefully, as I mentioned in my letter, that I contributed something to the city that I lived in, so I really enjoyed it. And I thank everyone for the comments.
Let's go on to your, Mr. Savadon.
We've been here about, you were on the commission around the same time I was hired here, so we've got a long history. We spent a lot of hours together in this room and in that other room.
Yeah.
So, it's been fun, I've enjoyed working with you. I'm looking forward to working with you on the other side, because wait till you see this project next, next meeting, it's pretty cool. And I like to work with Tom as an applicant, it's a lot of fun. And he's got, hopefully, he brings more designs, because he's creativity, he's always preaching creativity, and he brings a lot to the table as an applicant, so what we lose, we lose him as a planning commissioner, but we gain him as a potential applicant, so that's cool. Now, that being, talking about the 28th.
Yes.
Busy agenda.
Yes.
Busy agenda, so strap, strap it on for the 28th, because we're going to be here a while. So, we're going to talk about the wetlands ordinance, we've got some exciting projects that we're going to talk about, so it'll be, it'll be a good meeting, including Mr. Stratt, we get to see Mr. Stratt again, so it's going to be, going to be a, probably a potentially lengthy meeting, but a, but a very fun meeting, and we've got some great projects.
Grant shared the draft agenda with me, and I haven't seen an agenda like that in many years. Mr. Massey?
Well, first, I'd like to introduce our newest attorney, Nicole McMellon, also is Nikki, and I think maybe she should cover the 28th. And also, just to thank Mr. Stratt for his years of service, for as long as I remember being the representative of the city attorney's office, Mr. Stratt's always been here. I'm certainly going to miss you a lot, and I wish you well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I think that wraps it up. So, unless there's no further comments, we are adjourned.